I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order, excuse me, for Thursday, uh, excuse me, for Monday, July ninth, two thousand and eighteen. We were in executive session earlier this evening and moved to approve the taking for four central lab, we'll touch on that later. As required by open meeting law, you're hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting is notified by the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, would you?
The other five group?
The chair, if you're going to video or audiate. So, hearing nobody, please join in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which was sent, one nation and God, indivisible, liberally and just as one.
As I said earlier, we ended our executive session with the approval of the order of taking for four central lab, which is later on our agenda, we'll discuss that. Anybody for a weekly briefing? Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Board members, I just want, in administration, just, I want to publicly thank the town of Dennis, and in particular Chief Mark Delner. We found ourselves in a bit of a pickle about a month ago where our newest ambulance was involved in an accident with an alleged impaired driver, and shortly thereafter, we had another ambulance go down with major motor problems. So, the town of Dennis was gracious enough to let us have one of their four ambulances. So, we were both balanced at three. That truck came, the one that had motor issues is back today, so we are back to three. But, I want to publicly thank the town of Dennis and, again, Mark Delner, Chief of the Dennis Fire Department, for helping us out.
Thank you. Thank you to Dennis. Anybody else for weekly briefing? Public comment, please. Anybody for public comment? Ed?
Aye.
Oh.
Aye.
Hi, Madam Chair, my name is Bob Cohn from twenty-nine Pleasant Street, and I'm speaking on behalf of a group of Pleasant Street neighbors, some of whom are here tonight, and who recently sent you a letter requesting that the Schoolhouse Road parking lot expansion project be put on hold. Would like to ask that you, now that you put this matter on the agenda as early as possible, and give us notice when it's scheduled. As you're probably aware, there's considerable and growing neighborhood opposition to this project, and that we are advocating that other alternatives be tried first. So, in addition, we want to take this opportunity to thank you for starting down that path with the shuttle service and putting it on the agenda tonight. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I did attend that planning board hearing, and, you know, we certainly understood there was a lot of opposition, and we did put it on hold for now. So, we're looking to do whatever we can to improve the situation. Anybody else? So, go ahead.
Thank you very much. With regard to that same area, Rosemary O'Neil.
Excuse me. Thank you.
With regard to that same area, there is a, and, another concern, related concern, with the congestion in the parking that is, has recently been added, which is across from the entranceway to the parking lot for the Anchorage, and safety concerns. A member of the Anchorage was, is a retired lieutenant from one of the Massachusetts forces, and he was really, really, really concerned about the ability of emergency vehicles to get in and out in that highly congested area. So, if you could, one of the thoughts that we had, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to mention it or not, but if there could be perhaps, with the Chamber of Commerce's interest in this matter, if perhaps they could persuade some of the merchants to arrange for supervision of the parking of this highly trafficked area, particularly with regard to nights when there is heavy traffic, such as at nights of the stroll. If you would consider that, would be very grateful.
Thank you. We will look at all options that we can, and I do believe, I remember that being raised in the planning board hearing, and we, I think Krista, you noticed that you were going to be looking at all of that layout, so we do know that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
My name is Marilyn McElany, and I'm currently president of the Anchorage Board of Directors, and just to add to Rosemary, who is a board member, as another member, we find this a difficult thing, accident-prone-wise. It is, we keep reminding ourselves, Schoolhouse Road is a road, it's not a parking lot, so there has to be access in and out. And among other things that it would be nice for you to consider, on the last couple of weekends, we've noticed people with maybe fifteen or twenty cars come, park their cars, and a bus comes and takes them on their way, where they meet and leave their vehicles in the Anchorage, and on the Anchorage, in the municipal parking lot. And it is a definite safety issue for us, and we didn't know it was coming. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
This will probably be the last comment on the parking in the middle of the Chamber of Commerce parking lot. I just sent an email to all of the board members on Les Parmley at fifteen Pleasant Street. I spoke the other night at the planning board meeting about the same issue. This has really created a serious hazard for our residents, there's thirty-two units in there, and entering and exiting our property, it's, it, you've got cars and trucks immediately to the left, they're parked at an angle now, and there's cars, at least five parking spaces that obstruct our direct access in and out of that parking lot. I invite anybody to please come out there on a weekend or a busy night, and pull into our parking lot, turn around and exit, and you'll get it right away. I mean, you have to literally, we have no direct access anymore, so you have to go around those cars in the middle. This creates a very serious hazard for us, let alone the fact that, what, you know, Rosemary pointed out, emergency vehicles making that turn, if we need an emergency vehicle back there, when the parking lot is full, it's going to be extremely difficult, if not impossible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for weekly briefing? No? Okay. Go ahead and move on to, sorry, Ed.
I just wanted to mention a few things. Last weekend, with the somewhat less than stellar beach weather, it was actually a wonderful weekend for the Harwich Cranberry Festival's craft fair at Brooks Park, well-attended, and the vendors did well, as did the festival, who ran our food booth. Worked out, I think, exceptionally well. Next weekend, I'd like to just bring to people's attention, on Saturday, there's going to be the Harwich Cape Verdean Festival, which I think, I was at last year, and is a very interesting festival to attend, and I urge folks to attend that. And then this Thursday night, the Cranberry Festival will be, is launching the first of Cranfest in the Courtyard, a summer concert series at the Harwich Cultural Center, where we'll be putting on concerts every Thursday until August twenty-third, starting at six-thirty, running to eight-thirty in the courtyard, and if the weather is inclement, we'll be moving into the auditorium. So, it works out quite well, and we urge you to come. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. And sorry, I did say weekly briefing earlier, so I do mean public comment. Is there anybody else for the public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd move, I'd like to present the consent agenda and move its adoption, including approval of the minutes of June fourth regular session, June eleventh regular session, approved request by building commissioner to waive building permit fees for the Brooks Free Library renovation project, the approval of election offices as recommended by the Democratic and Republican town committees, approved request for various speed weathers for the Big Fix project, approve the petition from N-Star Electric to install approximately thirty feet of conduit under the roadway, and one handhold to provide service at thirty-six Northern Avenue, and to approve appointments of Larry Brophy to the Affordable Housing Trust, full member to June thirty, two thousand and twenty, and Val Peters to the Waste Water Support Committee, full member to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one. I move to the, their approval.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
I just, I just actually have a question. On the backup material, on the consent agenda, under item F, the approved appointments, there were four individuals listed, and two are being recommended, and two have been, the comment was wait, and I was wondering if the interview could, if he could comment on what that means.
There are a lot more people to interview, especially on the historic and historic district. We just wanted to complete the interviews to make a recommendation.
Michael?
On the Housing Trust, we decided that we would, we want to see more applicants, we don't want to just approve the first three that come before us.
Okay.
So, we're going to mention later in the comments that we're still looking for people for the Housing Trust.
Okay.
Okay. So, we have, we have a secondary answer. So, can it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Want to continue business? A, approve the application for Sunday entertainment by Port Restaurant and Bar, and request to extend starting time on weekly entertainment license. Krista, you want to go over?
We do have the applicant here for the two locations.
Good evening.
Hi.
For you.
Why don't you just do an overview of what you're seeking?
So, at both locations, just seeking the Sunday entertainment license. We currently have the Monday to Saturday, sorry, we currently have the weekday.
Slide it over closer to here.
We currently have the weekday, Monday to Saturday, and just looking to apply for Sunday as well, both locations. And the amended letter that we sent was really just to be consistent with our business hours. Currently, right now, it reads as five to ten p.m., and we open at lunch, you know, eleven-thirty, so.
So, you want to just start at eleven-thirty?
Yes.
Okay. So, any questions? Larry?
I don't, and essentially, I'm moving later, nothing else changes, it's just moving to, as you say, a bit of an earlier time sign, so.
Yes, and realistically, that's more for, you know, for using a speaker, or if we have, with the road race, or just to make sure that we have it during our hours of operation. That's, we're not looking to have bands at ten, at eleven-thirty in the morning.
Right.
I think anytime you come in front of us, as a reminder, be sure you keep the noise under control and, and live chat with the.
Correct. Absolutely.
Michael?
I have nothing. This request is the, is consistent with the conversation we had when we changed the entertainment license last year. We were going to make starting times, kind of up to the business hours, so.
Right. Ed?
No.
Don?
No, except to carry on with what Larry had said, it's that you, the hour, whatever the hours are changed to, the rest of the restrictions have, noise would apply.
Again, at the planning board hearing when you were in prior to, I know that you had compliments on, you know, being respectful in terms of the noise, et cetera, so I think that if we could get a motion, we could, Chris, can we combine, or do we?
I think for this, you'd want to do, because there's two requests, so the Sunday entertainment for Port and Bar, and then also the amended time for the weekday, you may want to, especially where we posted it that way.
Do them separately, okay.
I have the approval of the application for Sunday entertainment license for the Port Restaurant and Bar, and to request that the, extend the starting time on weekday entertainment license.
I'll second it for discussion.
Yeah, and go ahead, you can go to the podium, just identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Marsha Casey, and I live at twenty-nine Pleasant Street, and I would just like to point out that every night during the week, when music is playing at either Ember or the Port, we hear it in our backyard. We hear it on our front porch. Our neighbors who live across the street from us hear it on their front porch. And it's, you know, from five to nine every night, five to ten, actually, every night, and now it's going to be from eleven-thirty to ten every day. And I really think that's too much. And I know the requirements are, the music should not be heard more than a hundred and fifty feet from the establishment. We are well over a hundred and fifty feet, and we hear it all the time.
So, when you have that issue, do you call the police, or do you call?
Up until now, we haven't called. We did call once, it was not Ember this time, and it was not the Port this time. The time that we did call was for the Minno. We called the Minno twice, they did not turn down the music, we called the police, and they went over, and they did turn down the music. We could still hear it on the porch, it wasn't quite as loud, but I really don't want to have to call every night, but if it's going to be this way, I will.
Well, I appreciate that, and, I mean, we appreciate your coming and speaking, you know, for your concerns. I think that overall.
And we don't do it to be a disturbance, we would certainly, if someone could hear that's outside of that range, we're absolutely applicable to, you know, making it, you know, turn the noise down, or applying, and like I said, the eleven-thirty is strictly to be with our business hours, because that also does apply with just soft music outside on a speaker, too. We've been informed that that, so, you know, in order to have any kind of audible music whatsoever, it doesn't even have to be live, but we still need to have the entertainment license to apply with our business hours.
Right, and we were, you know, we, to Michael's point, you know, we did encourage that we have everything be in a uniform manner, and ten o'clock is the shut-off time, so, I mean, if there's a violation there, you should call again. I mean, you know, we can only tell you in terms of what your actions should be in terms of addressing that issue, and I would hope, and I think that the business is respectful. Don?
Yeah, Madam Chair, could I ask, Ed made the motion to add to that, all previous terms and conditions shall also apply?
Sure, I'll second that.
Okay. Did, did you want to speak on the same issue?
Yes, I did. We, Marsha, my wife, she's, we're six hundred feet away, and all the music that's played in, in the village is amplified. Whatever happened to acoustic music that wouldn't be heard so far away? I mean, why can't the, the restaurants do something like that? It's just, the, putting the obligation, the burden on us to have to call every time, it's kind of ridiculous, because that's what it ends up having to be. We hear their music every evening. I don't want to hear it during the day, too. We moved to Harwich Port for the peace and the calm, we didn't come here for the rock and roll.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Ed?
Technically, under the, the state's general laws, the covering entertainment license, if they open up the restaurant at eleven-thirty and have a radio playing inside near the Maitre D's station, they need to have an entertainment license. I mean, it covers any form of music, and so, that's, you know, for having a little background music during lunchtime, they need to have their inhalation, you know, it's not.
So. Chief? Oh, Chief, do you want to speak on this?
Madam Chair, Chief Dave Coman, Harwich PD. I just wanted to reiterate, I know I have at previous meetings, but the police department's kind of caught in the middle in this one, if you understand. We certainly are doing our job. We are being responsive to the calls that come in, and we have been proactive in having informational meetings since I came to town as chief, to try and explain to the liquor licensee establishments exactly what the terms and conditions of the, their regulations that they're bound to. And the outside entertainment has been the biggest issue for us in the past couple of years. And as you know, I appeared before the board and had a conversation on the hundred-and-fifty-foot rule. We felt that was reasonable because it was similar to the, the anti-noise bylaw. All I can, all I can suggest to the folks that are, that are hearing it beyond the one-fifty, as, as you said, Madam Chair, is to call. If you call us, we respond, and we check the distance, and just, you know, so everyone understands, if it's, if it's between the operating hours, the legal operating hours, say they have an entertainment license from five to ten for outside entertainment, if it's not heard outside the one-fifty, and they have an entertainment license for outside entertainment, then it's legal. If it's outside the one-fifty, then it's not, it's a violation of the entertainment license. If it's, so if you hear it at any time beyond the one-fifty, it's a violation. If it's after ten o'clock, it's a violation. If it's before the time that the entertainment license says on it, that's a violation. And I believe that's why I think the establishments here are just trying to come into compliance, because there was a, a check done and found outside music playing at eleven, and that is by definition, I had a very good conversation with Attorney Kelly regarding this, because I felt there might have been a misunderstanding that recorded music outside is considered to be outside entertainment. Doesn't have to be a band or a DJ. So, we are working to educate everybody as to, you know, the constraints that we're held to, as well as the establishments. I have concerns, but I do not have any strong objection to, to what's before you, but I just wanted to, to reiterate that the police department is, is being responsive as, as best we can in responding to these, and sometimes a violation does not exist, as far as at least entertainment goes. So, it's, there's no question it's a problem, because we have houses in proximity to, to establishments, and I, I don't have the answer, but I can assure you that we will be responsive, and usually the establishments are responsive, and, you know, our policy is, we get one warning, and then it comes before the board. So, if it was continuing to happen again, the licensing authority is the board, you have to have complaints on file. We have a couple who have already received a warning, and then the next one, if documented and found to be a true violation, comes before the board. That's been our process, and we've also had hearings brought establishments before the board for hearing, so I just wanted to, you know, say that we're, we're doing what we can within the letter of the regulations and the bylaws.
Thank you, Chief, and we appreciate the, the job you do, and I think that overall it has been a good process, and it's worked, so. With that motion on the table, and we have a second, with Ed's amended.
You second it.
Ed accepted.
Right.
Yeah, I seconded the exception.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, approve the application for Sunday entertainment by Ember Restaurant, and request to extend starting time on weekday entertainment license. Again, do you want to give a brief overview?
Same, same, same situation, just keeping it consistent with our existing, and then with our business hours as well.
Okay. Any discussion?
Somebody.
Apparently.
Somebody's calling up.
Oh, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ed.
I'd move approval of the application for Sunday entertainment by Ember Restaurant, and request to extend starting time on weekday entertainment license, subject to all the restrictions and previous limitations on the licenses.
Second.
Okay, motions have been seconded. Uh, Don?
Yeah, I just wanted to say to the folks who live in that area, it's not going to be a satisfying answer, but this is one of our older zones. The commercial zone is at twenty-eight and a hundred-and-fifty feet in, it becomes a residential. There's no buffers, there's no delineation like there is in East Harwich and some other places, and, that's where we're finding ourselves in this trouble, because he's doing a use that would be appropriate in, on that side of the hundred-and-fifty feet, but there's nothing beyond that other than a lot line, and then it begins to be residential.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve and accept the changes to House Bill H. four-four-three-seven relative to senior tax exemption. Chris, do you want to just give the overview?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. In terms of this, the town, at a town meeting, I believe, two years ago, approved for, town meeting approved for a request to extend and grant an additional exemption, or to raise the exemption for seniors primarily in the amount, up to the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand, I'm sorry, one thousand five hundred dollars of assessed valuation, and this is related to clause forty, forty-one C. of section five of chapter fifty-nine. What town meeting approved, and what the Board of Selectmen approved and sent in, it's not that unusual that House Counsel looks at it, and they make certain edits, and looking over the edits, they, they really just elaborated in things, I don't think they made any structural changes, but any kind, anytime they make a change, they want to make sure that the home district, in this case, the town of Harwich, and the Board of Selectmen is, is the executive authority in the community, is comfortable with the changes that they made prior to, and further action. So, really, what they're looking for is a board vote saying that you agree with the House Counsel's changes, as presented this evening, and it's House number four-four-three-seven.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this?
I'll move that, yes, yes, in discussion.
Well, you can make the motion.
Probably do that before discussing.
Yeah.
I move we approve the recommended changes on the House four-four-three-seven, as dated and signed in our package.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
I noticed in the back of the room is a member of our Board of Assessors, who is also the commission that brought this issue to town meeting and got the approval. Have you, has the commission reviewed the changes?
I was at, yes, we have, the board has, and I was at the State House last month, and I'd inquired as to what's happening with this particular bill. Until it's approved by the state, we have to continue to come back every year at town meeting to renew it. Once it's done by the state, we don't have to continue coming back, and it becomes a local option for any community in the Commonwealth to increase their senior exemption to people by that additional five hundred dollars. So, we want it done as soon as we can, and Representative Peak has been very cooperative in, in trying to get it through, so this change will help us achieve that goal, so.
Thank you, Richard.
And if, if I could ask, just to be clarified, the exemption is, is the qualifying seniors who meet the, I understand, income limits guidelines are exempt from the tax, taxes, it's not, and it's not from the assessed value?
No, it is, it's a straight exemption for their taxes. So, for instance, if a senior is paying two thousand dollars a year in taxes, and they meet income and asset requirements, and their house or their property is not an asset. So, if they're living in the home that they own, that is not an asset, and the asset limit is in the ballpark of forty-two thousand dollars, and the income level is whether you're single or married, they would qualify for an exemption up to fifteen hundred dollars off of that two thousand dollar tax bill. So, it's a great tool for the seniors in our community who need it. And the original legislation was for five hundred dollars, it was doubled a number of years ago, and we, as a town, have made the request to the state to triple that to fifteen hundred dollars. In a community like Harwich, fifteen hundred dollars or additional five hundred dollars doesn't sound like much, but to a senior in need in our community, it means everything.
And this, this is also, we also have other exemptions available to veterans in our town.
To veterans, those who are sight impaired, we have a number of exemptions. If anyone has any questions of what they may qualify for, I would highly encourage them to go downstairs and visit the assessor's office to see if there's something that you may qualify for. One of which is, that's overseen greatly, is those for our veterans, that there are a number of benefits that are available for the veterans of this country. If anyone has any even slight disability from their service to this country, at a, at a limit of, a minimum of ten percent, then they also qualify for a certain exemption. So, if anyone has questions who may qualify for either senior, sight impaired veteran, a number of particular exemptions, please feel free to go down to see the Board of Assessors, and we also have it on the town's website under the Board of Assessors, you could see what you might be able to qualify for. Thank you, Mr. McManus.
Thank you, Richard. Go ahead, Don.
Madam Chair, could I ask Larry to repeat the motion, because?
We did receive a.
We have a draft motion here.
We have a motion, I, I think I was close to this anyway, but the motion we were told to read is, vote to approve the tax changes in House Bill eight-four-four-three-seven.
That's what I seconded. That's what I thought.
That's what I seconded. That's what I thought.
I thought that too. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, um, acknowledgement of purchase and sale agreement and approval of order of taking for Four Central Avenue. Chris, I'll let you give the overview.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the board did vote this in the executive session, uh, two town meetings ago, uh, not this past, but the year before. Uh, there was authorization for the board to sell a small piece of property that was, uh, down, identified as Four Central Ave. Uh, we did go through a formal, uh, bid process, and there was a successful bidder, uh, one of the neighbors that was a successful bidder for the acquisition of that property. Uh, in the, uh, presentation of the, uh, purchase and sale, or in the, in the development of the purchase and sale, uh, there was a, a potential, uh, concern that was raised. So, we went to town meeting this past year, uh, to have the title be, uh, cleared, if you would, through an order of taking. So, the Board of Selectment has finalized the purchase and sale, uh, agreement and has approved the order of taking for Four Central Ave, which would allow for the purchase of that property, uh, the disposition. Uh, the amount is fifty-one thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and twelve cents. And just for, uh, information, any sale of property has to go into a sale of property account and can only be used for, uh, debt service or other related, uh, things of that nature.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion on this item? Okay. So, we've already voted it, but, um, we don't need to re-vote, uh, obviously, so we'll move on to the next. The housing trust overview and vote to sign the declaration of trust. So, we've created the housing trust at town meeting and voted. Now, we're working, as the interview committee noted earlier, we're working on, uh, getting people to, uh, volunteer to be on that trust. We've got Larry Ruffey. Uh, does anyone else have any, uh, more comments that they want to make, or Chris, do you want to?
Uh, Madam Chair, maybe I'll just take a, a minute to, uh, town meeting did approve this, uh, and basically what, what transpires is that, uh, the town has a new entity that will be part of it called the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust, uh, Fund. In that, uh, the town attorney has drafted the following documents, which were in, included in the materials and, and available for public review. Uh, once the board votes, we will have formally three members that are now on that trust, and it has five members in total. Uh, all what this has to do is to then be filed at the Registry of Deeds in order to become operational. So, once everyone is, uh, signed in and, and sworn in, and we have a minimum of three, then this could actually commence. So, with the board action this evening, if it is signed, uh, then we would have, uh, the ability to commence work on the trust. And what the trust would do is to identify, uh, different, uh, locations in the community and different partnerships for creating affordable housing. Uh, as folks may be aware, uh, town meeting through the CPC, Community Preservation Committee, uh, did authorize five hundred thousand dollars, uh, to go for this purpose, with the intent that that five hundred thousand, uh, the majority of it would be used for, uh, in, of going forward with affordable, uh, trust concepts, uh, properties, uh, to become affordable housing. And then the second was to, uh, fund a regional administrator, uh, to assist in that development. There are a lot of, uh, state regulations that need to be complied with for the development of affordable housing.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Well, we've discussed this numerous times.
Right.
It went through town meeting, so I think it's pleased, I'm pleased that it's come to fruition. Uh, remind me, we did appoint, uh, I think Don is our representative. Did we formally vote on that, or do we have to do that?
Yes, we did.
My, my, uh, second comment is, is that, uh, I think we all want to be served that this, this is, uh, consistent with our CPA and CPC committee. So, we're not, uh, usurping power of will from another committee. We're using those funds to be, uh, more proactive, even more efficient while getting affordable housing. So, I think that's important that, uh, we all understand as well.
Michael?
I have nothing.
Ed?
Well, I think the important point that Larry makes is that in the past, we've actually missed some opportunities because our existing committee structure can't respond quickly when opportunities, uh, appear and have to wait until town meeting, which may, depending on the time of year, be twelve months away, and you lose opportunities. And this provides structure to move ahead swiftly.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It, it also allows us to prioritize things as well as do them quickly. I mean, it, it's just as important to keep someone in the current residence they have and rehabilitated as opposed to making them go homeless and then putting them in an affordable house after that. Uh, this, this will allow a lot of things to happen and allow for one central spot to weigh what those options are and where money should be expended in a kind of rational way. So, you know, it, it's a really good thing, and I'm glad to see Harwich participating. And Eastham has been doing it, and Yarmouth has been doing it to great effect.
Right. Yeah, I think that we, you know, we had great success with, um, town meeting this year and CPA. I know, um, we attended a lot of their meetings. It was truly house money for house funding. So, ultimately, um, you know, other towns have made the same decision. Many of us attended, uh, Cape Housing Institute where we learned that really the trust is the way to go so that we, as a community, can do something about the housing crisis that we, we truly all face, our neighbors and, and all of the Capes. So, it's good to have a vehicle to finally move forward and identify, you know, properties and projects and such. So, without any further discussion, can we get a motion?
Move to accept the trust decree that is written.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Final FY eighteen budget adjustments, vote to authorize the chair to sign. Chris, you want to go over those?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to have, uh, Carol, the Finance Director, get up, but, uh, just for folks at home, uh, the, uh, opportunity for a town, we have a, a, you know, multimillion dollar business here, sixty million plus, and there are times in which we have certain accounts that, uh, run short and certain accounts that have, uh, available funds in them. Uh, the law changed probably about within the last ten years that allows for a process to do some truing up. So, if we're short in one line item, we can offset with savings in another. Uh, so that truing up process, as, as I call it, uh, does require two steps. Uh, one is for the Board of Selectmen to approve those, uh, true-up items, and then secondly, the, uh, Finance Committee. So, we are on the Finance Committee agenda for Thursday night, uh, to go and seek their approval. But what this does is it allows us to, uh, close out FY eighteen. Uh, in terms of the details of those transfers, uh, maybe I'll have Carol do a overview of the items.
Thank you. Good evening, Carol.
Hi, good evening, Carol, Coca-Cola Finance Director. Um, I have nine pages of, um, transfers for your review this evening. Um, I can give you an overview of what they are, uh, but some of them we're probably going to get, or want, want to be a little more specific. Okay?
Thank you.
Um, so, there, there were, um, a few small, um, budget errors in FY eighteen. Uh, we recognized them when we were preparing the budget for FY nineteen. Um, so this, so, so we were able to correct them in FY nineteen, but we still have to live with them, with, um, a couple of the errors. In addition, we had some personnel changes. We had some unanticipated retirements. We brought, um, one individual on conservation, a full-time individual, and we, um, did not fill another position in community development. So, this caused some of the budgets to be short and some to have excess funds in them. So, I can go through these page by page if that would be helpful for you, and I'd be happy to do that. Um, the first page in front of you, um, is, um, and I can just overview how the form is laid out. So, you'll have-
Hold on. Uh, sorry, excuse me.
What you can do to help me, Carol, uh, is explain a little bit of the thought transfer. There's, when you look at these, there's no rhyme or reason, you know. When I look at the first page, it's town retirement going to advertising. You're just playing the, uh, moving numbers. It doesn't matter physically what they're doing, you're just trying to make the numbers work.
That's correct.
So, that's the thought process.
That's correct. Looking for excess in certain line items and deficiencies in others. And, and in order for the, if we didn't do this, the Department of Revenue comes in and, and makes a review of our year-end closing on an annual basis and certifies free cash. Um, when they certify free cash, they would reduce your free cash by any of these budget line items that, where you had overages, where you had excess funds that you spent.
Thank you, Carol. Do we want to go page by page, or do we want to?
Yeah, I was thinking that maybe just, uh, a little bit more of just a simplistic overview.
Right.
I, I think as Carol had indicated, in some cases, it's just a matter of, uh, like on the community development, that it just transferred from one to another because we had money in one and, and then another one. And so, it's just moving it to the appropriate line. Uh, again, maybe for folks at home, we do have a line item budget, so everything has to be, uh, identified. One thing that actually isn't on here, which I think is, I think, a first in, in the time that I've been here, is that the legal fund has, uh, met its target. So, we've been on budget for legal this year. And I think that that has been a, a source where we've been over, uh, fairly consistently on that. So, we have been increasing that to address, uh, some legal matters. Uh, but the one, uh, more significant one in terms of, uh, this would be, uh, there is about, I think it's seventy thousand dollars, uh, related to, and merely, I think, for full disclosure here, uh, relevant to, uh, we had the issue up at the, uh, pet burial ground, and we had received during the process a legal opinion saying that we could not expend, uh, cemetery revolving account money for the purposes of development of a pet burial ground, uh, and that it was advised, or we were advised, that we did need to cover the cost because we had in good faith entered into contracts with people to do that work, uh, and that here we are transferring money into, uh, the general fund of cemeteries, uh, the amount of seventy thousand dollars to cover that work. So, town meeting, I, I think when the issue of the crematorium came up, uh, had some concern about that, uh, development and that site. Uh, we have had legal, um, review done and a legal opinion that if we're going to spend money on a pet burial ground, the advice we received was to separate that off in the general fund, uh, create a revolving account, and we probably should seek a specific appropriation as part of the capital budgeting process for the project, uh, because we do have specifically by charter, a limit, anything over fifty thousand should be identified in our, in our capital budget. And anything close to fifty thousand has been what people have been advised of by administration.
Thank you.
Uh, as part of our discussion, Chris, uh, you know, part of the money going to cemetery comes from group health insurance. How's that made up then? Is it, uh, does it go to the town budget?
Yeah.
Next year, or?
I, I think it's-
Are we short now for health insurance?
No. Uh, I, I think the, the best way to, to look at this is areas where we're over, such as this, seventy thousand, that on health insurance, health insurance, we have to estimate how many people are going to be enrolled, what the anticipated increase is going to be, and if we're going to have additional people sign up. So, uh, health insurance tends to be one of the larger moving targets, and with a, uh, a, a family plan being about thirty thousand dollars, it's a big number. Uh, so, we do try to budget a certain amount, assuming certain, uh, things that happen, uh, and sometimes we don't have those assumptions, don't come to fruition.
Not to cut you short, the bottom line is, there's money there to do it with.
There's money in there to offset these.
Effective health insurance, so going after it immediately.
Yes. Sorry.
Okay. Don, did you want to?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, it's, it's seventy thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, I'm assuming we're not doing this just because we want to, you know, put it on a different funding source, that it wasn't eligible with the original fund. And I've always felt it's a bad idea to use a revolving fund to build anything. I mean, to fix something, to buy something, that's one thing. If you build something, that's a problem. But secondarily, and I had this conversation with John Giorgio at the time, nothing that passes a town meeting article, nothing can suggest that you're going to violate the charter and/or mass general law. It's all got to be consistent with that. We had a capital, uh, requirement, uh, in the first place, and the only reason I'm mentioning that is because we promised as a board to hold a moratorium and wait the town meeting and go put this on the capital program and then come up with a solid funding source to allow people to weigh in on what they want to do. We set aside the land to do it, and I know that we said that we were going to build it, but we never actually got to that next step and said, okay, can you give us some money to do it, or will you approve that this is a capital project? And I don't want anybody to think of this transfer as somehow blessing everything so that we're good to go now, uh, with that pet burial ground, because we're not.
Ed, did you have any comments?
Um, you really don't want to hear my comments. You know, I, I guess, you know, it, what happened is unfortunate, um, but, uh, if you look at the records, uh, the advice that was given by what our legal counsel changed, uh, through the process, um, it wasn't like, what we did was being hidden by anybody. It was right there on the road to the dump that everybody passes weekly, um, you know. So, we all, uh, there's, um, were a lot of, uh, failures in the process, and luckily, um, everybody sort of participated, knew they were happening and participated in, and nobody could have caught the mistakes until-
Oh, yeah, I think-
Very late on, so.
Right. Um, Michael?
So, I just want to agree with Ed. Just put that on the record. Uh, the, uh, transferred, uh, Carol, on the first line to be transferred to, it says transfer out thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty, and then out of, out of the group health, and then the bottom two lines say cemetery. Why isn't it all coming, why isn't the top line say cemetery as well?
Because part of the expenses were incurred in FY seventeen, and so generally accepted accounting principles require us to transfer the money into the, um, transfer the money in to the general fund, the expenses in, and that's how we ha, it's just an accounting requirement. It's one of those, um, specialized, um, I guess, confusing requirements.
Thank you.
So, we're just following generally accepted accounting principles.
So, the next one is the, uh, school retirement health, forty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty. I thought we were independent of this school. They have their own budget. Why do we have, why do we have that money?
We actually retained the liability when we were one system, uh, our, the Harwich system. So, those folks that worked for the Harwich system prior to Monomoy, we're still on our books as our obligation.
Okay.
Uh, that's all I had.
Done. Okay, so, and, and to that point, and, you know, I think we're all in agreement that there were errors made, and we've addressed them and we've discussed them and we're moving forward. And to Don's point that we're, you know, not doing anything further, we're trying to remedy the situation for the accounting purposes and to get our free cl, free cash declared. So, in that regard, can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve the recommended budget transfers.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No, we vote against it. Poked. It's a-
Okay, so, we go.
Three to two?
Three to two.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Okay. On to, uh, letter to legislative delegation regarding permanent protection for Nantucket Sound. This is in regard to, uh, letter we received about, uh, further development of Nantucket Sound. Again, um, I don't know if anyone wants, do, do you have any discussion on this? Or Chris, do you want to give any overview?
I thought we were, uh, that the board held this over because the, a proponent for the request was going to come in and present it.
Yeah, well, I thought that, I, I-
But I wasn't, I wasn't prepared to present this. It was something that was a request from the, the, a private entity, a private person.
So, we'll move on. We'll, we'll put it on the next.
Put it on for the next agenda, unless someone is here from the-
Yeah, I don't see any, right. That was my understanding too, because we, we did inform them that we were putting it on the agenda if they, so, I don't see anyone. So, we'll table that. Okay. Uh, the summer shuttle bus service to Howardport from two oh three Bank Street to Bank Street, to Bank Street Beach. I don't know if that's, but it's-
So, Madam Chair, I guess I will, uh, take a little bit of a, a stab at, at this. Um, obviously, I have met with some of the neighbors and I- Obviously, I have met with some of the neighbors, and I appreciate their, their comments in regards to the development of the, the Schoolhouse parking lot. And I think that they raise valid concerns that have other items been looked at seriously and considered as seriously for alternatives for expanding the parking. I think to do anything this summer, it wouldn't be timely anyway. We've lapped sufficient time. Some of the points that were raised are under review by our town attorney, so we will definitely review those carefully when we get that analysis back. But I do think to the point, is there an opportunity for something else that can be done in the short term? I think primarily, at least the focal point, and some of these comments came from the residents, I want to appreciate and, and just extend that, that I have a lot of different hats that I wear, and I certainly try to do a lot, but sometimes it's nice to get a different set of eyes. So in terms of that, one of the thoughts that had come up, we do have parking locations that we could have people utilize. I did have a conversation with the Harbor Master, two oh three Bank Street, which is currently the Harbor Master's maintenance shed, or maintenance office area. Does have parking associated with the Harwich Conservation Trust. That is a parking field that would be available. Two oh three Bank Street is a former fire station on, on Bank Street. I did look, I was just curious, parking in Schoolhouse Lot and walking to Bank Street Beach is about half mile. And the distance from two oh three Bank Street to the beach, just going on Google Maps here, is about a mile. So it's not that, considerably that much more of a walk. I certainly would recommend that Bank Street along that stretch does have a sidewalk along that way, so people could traverse that safely. Or I know some of the comments that I had heard that people could drop off their family at the beach and then go up and park at two oh three, and then one person would have to walk. As a dad, I know I've done that several times myself with, when my kids were younger. So I think that that would be a, a potential option for the short term. Just in terms too, for the evening activities, Bank Street itself, Bank Street Beach, we don't allow overnight parking, but certainly people could park down there, and it would be even a shorter walk to go up to the restaurants and to utilize some of the nightlife that exists in Harwich Port. That obviously would be a significantly shorter walk if people were to park and use that kind of in reverse. Obviously, I think beach parking tends to slow down and wane in the early evening hours, and that people could utilize that. We have had some discussions, I know Cindy's in the, in the crowd, about the, the concept of a shuttle bus. We have not, I guess it's been attempted before in the past, and it was not totally successful. Just coincidentally, we happened to be at a meeting in Chatham this afternoon, and the town of Chatham has set up a valet service with bus options to kind of bus people to some of their beaches. So we have requested the RFP from the town of Chatham to do that. So there is a potential, I think it was brought up even at this board, that potentially we could look at other sites that would be a little further. And if there was a private sector solution for people to perhaps park in some of the dirt lots, the dirt lot behind the community center, or if the schools were to make some of their parking available up at the high school, if there was a private sector interest of people being able to park off-site and then be able to commute down into that area, has a potential that would exist. And then one, one other one, as I was chatting with some of the folks, I, I recognize that in some areas, I know in, in my career, I've seen that when you build a efficient sidewalk, people will come and people will use it. And having people be able to safely traverse an area. So as I think I reported to this board previously, town meeting this year was requested to fund, and they did fund two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to improve Route twenty-eight from Sacre Tucket Harbor to Harwich Port for the concept of some of the improvements being made at Sacre Tucket Harbor. People could look at that and then walk to Harwich Port. And the state, in discussions with them, have their process for what they believe would need to be done. It would cost the town two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for us to do the work. The state, because of some of the state requirements, would be closer to six hundred and fifty thousand. So what I have requested that DPW do is to have a grant application drafted up for a program called Mass Works and see if we could get, use that two hundred and fifty to leverage Mass Works grant to then get the six hundred and fifty and build a sidewalk the whole distance to, to try to allow that. I think the more that summer renters could be advised to leave the car in the, in the driveway and just walk to Harwich Port could certainly alleviate some of the burden that's there. But as I said to some of the neighbors, you know, this is kind of, in some ways, it's good that we do have successful businesses and we do have a vibrancy in the business community in Harwich Port. And it certainly is going to be a fine balance to promoting the development of that and the continuation of that while trying to work with the neighbors to maintain the, the atmosphere of why they moved to Harwich in the first place.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a little confused about what our objective is here because I thought the purpose of that parking lot was for economic activity, for businesses, restaurants in Harwich Port. We sell beach permits, and I understand the lot can get filled up, but then again, so can the beach. The idea of people walking with beach floats from Harwich Port down to the beach is anathema to that. It seems like that wasn't the whole point. And if that's what we're talking about with the shuttle bus, I don't even understand why we're doing it. I, I had thought that this, that the parking lot was getting filled. We weren't able to get turnover. When people go to the beach, they're not coming back in an hour. So we're not able to get turnover in the parking lot. We were trying to fit more cars in, which I understand the concerns of the community. I could see a shuttle bus coming from like the cultural center, for instance, because we own that property. But I thought that the point was is that the lot was getting filled and we were trying to deliver people to Harwich Port, as in Chatham. Not to, not to give them an opportunity to get on a bus to go to the beach. Maybe I'm wrong, but that, that's my impression.
I think that, that is, I think, at the bottom of this law, at the end of the sentence, where it's Bank Street to Bank Street Beach. I think the idea was that, Don, was the initial, we were having difficulty with the lot on Schoolhouse, and we were looking to alleviate that, some of that parking issue so that if we could, you know, use a shuttle from Bank Street to town.
Well, I, I make that point only because when we sell stickers, the revenue goes to Wreckin' Youth, and that money gets used to do something with the beaches. I mean, they hire lifeguards, they clean up the beach. If we short circuit that whole process, we're not helping ourselves.
No, it's true. So I, I think there was some, I think there is some confusion because I think that was the gist of what we were looking at, was to shuttle to town.
Yeah.
Right, so just to clarify, so.
Yeah, to shuttle to Harwich Port and to shuttle.
You could do both.
If you take the beach off traffic away.
Right, if you had the issue where, because that, to Chris's point, if the lots are filling up down there and they're parking in the parking lot, then, you know, we're back to that problem again of people parking in the parking lot to go to the beach, which we've heard from, you know, all, all of the commercial people downtown, that it's an issue. So we have that issue, we have beach parking issue. So any opportunity we have to alleviate some of the parking stress, and, you know, we've just had the discussion of why Pleasant Street and the approach at this point isn't working, and the need to address the Anchorage condo concerns. So we have a lot of different concerns in that parking lot as it is, but I think that that is the gist.
Don't get me wrong, but in concept, I like the idea. It's just that I think we need to have this discussion about what our first priority is and what our second priority is and try to align that with what we're trying to do instead of just throwing some buses off the road and seeing what happens.
Ed, did you have something?
As I approached the, the original proposal, it was attempting to expand the, the lot in, in Harwich Port for the businesses because so much of it was being used by beachgoers and locking it up for the entire day rather than just a short period as most people who would be shopping or, or, or going to the restaurant. That not having worked out, then the other tack would be to eliminate the pressure on that lot being put on it by people going to the beach by finding a lot somewhere else that those people could be, could park in. And, and, and the use of the lot at the old fire station, it is not that much further of a walk than the, the walk the beachgoers do from the Schoolhouse Lot. And, and quite honestly, you know, people, dad can come, drop the kid, the family off, go park it and either walk it themselves, or if it turns out too far, we want to run a shuttle bus. I don't think that's particularly necessary. I think quite possibly you could establish a, a system of, of, of longer bikes for whoever's having to make the trip back and forth to do it. And, and quite honestly, you know, so as not to harm the revenue that we receive from selling beach parking. You could make the, the lot at the, uh, uh, fire station a fee lot to pay for the expense of, of, that we'll, we'll, we'll have in monitoring it and potentially running a shuttle bus.
Michael?
Chris, there's no money available to do this this year anyway, right?
Well, we could have people park in the two oh three Bank Street. There'd be no cost advising people.
But a shuttle bus.
The shuttle bus would park.
I mean, the people are parking at two oh three Bank anyway. I mean, this, this weekend, there was ten plus cars there all weekend, so. I think it's a great idea. I think the chamber, along with the business owners, have done a great job promoting Harwich Port, bringing a lot of people to Harwich Port. And certainly, we had a parking problem, I think, before a lot of that happened. And now we have a real parking problem. We've got great support from the neighbors tonight to tell us we have a parking problem. So I, I, I think we, a shuttle bus, you know, and I think taking away from our beach stickers, I think the more people we bring to Harwich Port and to our beaches, the more people that aren't going to Chatham or Orleans or anyplace else. And they're frequenting our businesses and they're making them successful. So we really should explore this, but it's not a possibility for a shuttle bus this year. That's it.
Larry?
I find this being the initial discussion. We need to get started and come up with a plan with priorities. You know, get started. We've had a couple. I'm looking for something to come in front of us that we can, some concrete proposals.
Well, and, oh, sorry, go ahead.
You go ahead. I have just an additional.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, when we attended the plant, planning board hearing, you know, we were asked, and, and you're right, I think this is just to have that discussion and to see what we can at least even get the word out that you have the ability to park at two oh three Bank or in the evening, think about parking, you know, down at the beach when there's no cars there because to that point, you can drop off and have one person walk and so on, not increasing the traffic flow and causing more safety issues. But one, one thing brought out to us at the planning board meeting, which I think is, is a valid point, is come up with some, some sort of different approach, some sort of innovative idea. And I think that we're trying to do that and having this discussion. If we can't accomplish the shuttles this year, we understand that, but at least we're getting the word out there that, that we're trying a different path. I think also getting the word out there that people can park at two oh three and they can park at the beach in the evening. I, I don't necessarily know that people think of that all the time, so. Richard, did you want to make the point?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I own a building downtown, and for years, we've had problems parking in our lot. And it was perceived that that was a public parking lot, and it has not been. It's been a private lot. I have rights into the entire lot. We went through the process with the planning board of having the building that's being built there and a discussion of what can be used in the parking lot. We've had it posted that that lot is for the businesses that are there. For years, people were parking there, taking their floats, going down Braddock Lane to go to Bank Street Beach from there. We have huge success with some of the restaurants downtown, and people will park there. Right now, in Schoolhouse Parking Lot, you're, a big part of that is employees for some of the businesses downtown, parking there for the day. It's not as many of the beachgoers that are there. It's a public lot. You know, in my understanding, I believe it was under the auspices of the Recreation and Youth who actually has authority there. You've got some issues. We had an opportunity last year, the Teddy Apostle Building right behind Mad Minnow became available. We missed an opportunity. We could have bought that for four hundred thousand and created another hundred parking spots downtown. We missed it. I think you're talking about, as, as the leadership of the community, I think, Madam Chair, you might want to consider for next year, putting together a working group of, of someone from planning board, someone from the Board of Selectmen, some of the businesses downtown, maybe someone from Wreckin' Youth, who are dealing with this issue all the time. We've started towing in our lot. We've had to because we've got tenants who own businesses there that need to have parking spots for their businesses. We've kicked out a number of people who are working at some of the local restaurants who want to find a place to park because their businesses don't have parking for their employees. That's where those folks could be parking at two oh three Bank and walking downtown to those businesses to allow some of those spots out there. It's not a solution you're going to come to easily. And a lot of the suggestions can be done through the chamber with plenty of notification over the winter and the spring where parking is available. We've got the largest transportation company on Cape Cod here in Harwich, who have loads of shuttle buses that could be utilized. But a study group looking at that, that the town doesn't have to pay for it, that it's done maybe through private sponsorships or a private entity that could tie in not just Bank Street, but Harwich Center to Harwich Port, to look at some economic viability back in the center of town in a very simple loop. Main Street, Bank Street, twenty-eight, South to Forest. That one simple loop every fifteen minutes that would there, it would encourage people parking in a load of different areas, not just at two oh three Bank. There are a lot of suggestions, but I think you need to bring the right players together to talk about it, put a group together, come back with something to planning board and to you as a Board of Selectmen to see what can be workable for next year. You're not going to solve this for this summer.
Right. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
It's a great idea, and I think we should move forward with that, put a group together. I mean, you know, it's, it's a real issue and it's not going to go away. Did you want to speak?
Dave Burke, two hundred Bank Street. How does this affect the sale of that property? I thought we were selling two oh three.
So Madam Chair, he brings up a great point. What I was thinking is more for, temporary for this summer. In terms of the long term, the Harbor Master's office won't be, or the maintenance office won't be vacated until the early fall. So we anticipate the Harbor Master's office, maintenance office down at Sacre Tucket being completed in October. So what I was planning on doing was to bring back a RFP for the selectmen to give some consideration. I think we did do a, an initial draft that there was some concerns with, so we need to revise that. But town meeting did formally vote to have that property be sold off. And they did have in there, at least the intent of town meeting, as I recall, was to have it be sold off for conservation purposes initially. And then if the conservation purposes did not take, then, then we could extend to other options, i.e. maybe housing or things of that nature. So I think that the discussion for the board is that we will put together the RFP for the potential sale of that property. It would be nothing that would prohibit the town, just as a for instance, to potentially sell that lot, sell that area and to retain some parking for HCT and for other town uses. So that is something that in the development of that RFP could be considered. But the board, I think, needs to have a, more of a discussion once we come back with a more revamped RFP for the sale of that property. But the, the comment is well taken that that was the intent of town meeting.
Thank you. Ed?
Well, I have just a couple of items. One, in the, looking at future planning in addition to simply looking at, at parking and shuttle busing and. and shuttle busing and those sorts of solutions, I think it would be behooves to reach out to some of the local businesses involved in bicycles about whether or not there's any interest in then putting together a bike sharing system, which is being used in many, both resort and urban areas around the country to great advantage. And then the other issue is, you know, yes, town meeting did vote to approval of the Selectmen potentially selling that property, but it, I do know in the past, actions that town meeting has taken and not been undertaken immediately, several years later, an alternate plan has come up and been changed. The property that Stone was now occupies in the west side of town, the authorization on that for sale had happened, I think, twelve years before it was actually put up on the market because there was disagreement amongst the Selectmen of whether that was a good thing to do or not. And so.
Right, right. Okay. Hold, we have this, this.
Carla.
Yeah.
Carla. Carla, 200 Bank Street. Just have a couple of points and perhaps questions. First of all, I want to say that there is no sidewalk across the street from the parking lot at 203 Bank Street. It is one of the sections of Bank Street that has no sidewalk. There's no crosswalk either. So, you know, that can be a hazard for people who want to cross that street. But I also wanted to say that the neighbors are quite concerned about, already about the traffic along Bank Street. We have been in touch in recent past with the police station, police officers, who have looked at the traffic, the number of cars and the speeding, the speed of the cars that go down that street. So we're really concerned that if people are encouraged to park at 203 Bank Street, that we're gonna have even more traffic along Bank Street. And it's gonna create a hazard, people going in and out of that lot. It's no sidewalk across the street and no crosswalk. So I, I think this is really a short term, I understand you're looking for a short term solution for a growing problem, but remember, this is a residential neighborhood. And you're gonna be getting, you're gonna be hearing from a lot of neighbors about that. You might want to think instead, if you're thinking shuttle or temporary parking, at a place like the Cultural Center, that might even bring people to the Cultural Center if they start parking there. So just something to consider, that you're looking at a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood, that already has problems with traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I put some context to that? Bob, Ms. Madam Chair, Bob, 89 Bank Street. Couple of things. One, I'm a little bit confused, and this is a complex problem. I'm glad I'm not sitting there, I'm just standing here. I don't envy your position. I guess first of all, we've been going, we've been coming to Harwich Port for almost forty years. And our kids and now our grandkids go to Bank Street Beach. And that's their preferred beach. Now, there are days when you can't find a square foot of space on Bank Street. So the concept or the notion to try to generate more parking, to bring more people onto a beach that's already standing room only, confuses me. To Carla's point, with the help of Mark Holmes, we've done a couple of traffic, we've had a couple of those traffic monitors, speed detectors. Let me give you some, some numbers. Now, these are not hard, I mean, this is a sampling, clearly needs to be looked at more seriously. But on October, in October 2017, that's the date of the report, so from 10:18 to 10:26, this was a speed detector that was near Ember, so traffic going south, twenty mile an hour speed limit. Average speed was twenty-nine miles an hour. Eighty-five percentile was thirty-five miles an hour. Recording speeds over forty miles an hour, this is a twenty mile an hour zone, heading towards Route 28, heading towards Ember. All the kids playing out there now, this is, this isn't Harwich Port of twenty years ago, this is Harwich Port of today. And I, I can provide you with these numbers. Total numbers of cars heading southbound over that period was 10,093 cars. Of the 10,093 cars, 8,991 were over the speed limit. So when you talk about adding components to, as Carla said, a neighborhood, this is a neighborhood. This isn't a freeway. Another period of time, this is during July, we recorded a one-day period, 2,700, 2,270 vehicles, of which 1,631 were over the speed limit. So again, as you look at this issue, I mean, it's a parking issue, it's a traffic issue, it's a speed issue, it's a, it's an enforcement issue. We don't see any enforcement. You know, Mark Holmes, who's been a great asset, provided us, you know, given us some of his data. And, and this goes on to another, and I don't want to get, drag this on. But as you look at traffic, you look at parking, you look at Bank Street, you look at Bank Street Beach, if it's at capacity, it's at capacity. Other towns, you know, they, they reached, that's it. You know, other towns in the state of Massachusetts, they reach capacity, parking lots closed. That's capacity. So the notion of trying to create more parking, to push more people onto Bank Street Beach, I don't think it's gonna be a great experience on Bank Street Beach. And so I think, please take that into consideration as you think of it. I mean, yes, be creative. Alternate ways to do this, I'm all for. But I think that it seems like the focus here is, well, we'll use 203 because this will solve. And I'm not sure it's gonna solve the problem, I think it's gonna create a bigger problem. Thank you.
Ed?
I'd just like to reiterate, my belief that what we're trying to do here is not to increase the parking for the beach, but to move the current parking that's being used for the beach from the lot in Harwich Port to somewhere else, so that's available for our growingly more successful restaurants and shops. I'd rather move, move that than have them be starved for customers and start failing.
Rosemary O'Neill, 15 Pleasant Street. Just to say that with the expansion of Sacquet Tucket, I think we can envision a lot more traffic of people coming here, going to Nantucket, vice versa, et cetera. Most of those people, I think, that will make use of those expanded facilities will, that will be vehicular traffic, you know, I believe. Not vehicular, pedestrian traffic, excuse me, pedestrian traffic. But for the vehicular traffic to which other people have spoken, I wonder if, two things. First of all, with regard to the task force that Richard proposed, that whenever any discussion is of any particular area, we make certain that residents of that area are represented on the task force. It's number one. Secondly, one of the measures that might be considered in the many, many that will be offered, I am sure, is the possibility of speed bumps on streets like Pleasant Street or Miles or, you know, especially as they approach areas like Schoolhouse Road, which are heavily trafficked. Because as people have mentioned, there certainly are, you know, problems with speeding coming along, particularly, you know, as some of the eating and drinking establishments close down and people are tired and they may not be fully aware of, you know. So I just offer that as a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Oh, this gentleman's gonna.
That's okay. That's right.
This is more of a question. I know it's a municipal parking lot, but one way for people to get to auxiliary parking lot is to make it expensive to park in a municipal one. If, is, I don't know whether that's within the law, but, you know, give everybody an hour, an hour and a half free. Then from then on, it costs money. Believe me, those who are gonna spend the day at the beach are not gonna spend fifteen dollars to park all day. So I don't know whether that could be a consideration.
Actually, you know, I think we've had the discussion about introducing initially like a monitoring process where we're watching who's, who's there and how long and then phasing in if we needed to.
Yeah, yeah.
Some sort of fee because to your point, you know, if it's a little bit more to park, it's not.
That's right. I mean, if it's gonna cost me fifteen dollars, I'm gonna go to the other lot and, you know, take the shuttle.
Right. I think also to Ed's point, you know, about not trying to pack the beach, it's just that we're trying to move people out of that lot, so.
Just a question, what do we charge for a single day ticket at the beach?
I think it's twenty dollars.
It's twenty dollars already. They're willing to pay that. And we, at one point, we had to raise the parking fine because people, it wasn't, it wasn't enough extra for them to worry about. Good evening.
So you have, if you're gonna talk, you have to be at the podium, so let's let this gentleman talk.
Good evening, Jack Walton, 244 Bank Street. The first comment that Mr. Howell made hit home real big to me, and that is, there's two problems here from my perspective. It's the downtown commerce, how do we keep that vibrant? How do we keep people moving through there? And then there's maybe a beach parking problem in town, not necessarily just Bank Street Beach. So if we're talking about trying to improve the parking, I'm sure Earl Road, I'm sure, Red River, all of them probably have a similar situation, day in and day out throughout the summer, as is experience at Bank Street. So let's not try and solve all of the town beach parking problems on Bank Street's back. And let's make sure that as we look at these issues, they're separate issues, they're related a little, but they are separate. We want to keep downtown vibrant. The idea, I thought it was a great idea of making it known that you could park at Bank Street Beach at night and then have a very short walk. Because I'm sure there are many people who come into Harwich Port at night for the first time. They've heard how great it is and they don't know where to park, so whether they park on one of the town streets. But if there was a sign that said, hey, guys, go down here, you can walk right up the street, the gentleman from Embers, he probably loved that idea. He's got, you'd have the closest venue for people. But I think we have to make things more visible, instructions more visible, opportunities more visible for those people who are coming in who aren't knowledgeable. And let's make sure we help our businesses because as someone had said, we want them to thrive. And let's resolve or solve the beach parking across all of the beaches, not just on the back of Bank Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll take the last two. Go ahead.
Donna Hanson, I'm at 24 Pleasant Street. Our house faces the wooded lot that's under discussion. I was speaking with one of the restaurant owners in Harwich Port this evening, and he told me that he thought if there is some way that we can somehow get people aware of where all the other parking places are, that that would solve so much of the problem. It also, if you think about it, is right now, when there's, everybody parks in the one lot, then all the businesses concentrated in that one spot. If we utilize more parking spaces, sidewalks for walking, whatever, we're gonna spread that business out throughout Harwich Port. So it's not just the people right across from the lot, but all the people blocks away too, and help those businesses grow. We don't want them to grow huge, that's not what Harwich Port is. We want, we like it the way it is. We don't want to be Chatham. But we want them to have enough business, but they don't need to double their businesses. You know, I mean, let everybody use what's here.
Thank you.
That's what I'd ask you to look for.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Beth Walton, 244 Bank Street. I just wanted to say that Bank Street is a residential street and this is a commercial problem. So maybe if we found a commercial place to solve the problem, it would not take away from the residential homes. I love to walk down to the center and walk back, and we like to do it at night as well, but it is kind of dangerous. I've just recently gotten the bright yellow jackets from Ella Bean so that my kids can be seen because as the night grows on, cars get going faster and some of them aren't necessarily watching for a pedestrian. So I just think that a commercial problem could be maybe solved in a more commercial area.
Thank you. Cindy? After Cindy, we'll move on.
I think I'll be the one that ends some of this. We, Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber, through a couple of meetings over the last week or so, we've come up with some other things. But also something that we were going to address later on in the evening was about our cultural district. Part of what's going to be happening with that is, and Chris will touch on this and then I will as well, about a grant that we've received. Part of it is going to include a map. And we will have the different parking options that we all come up with as a team together because what's wonderful about our town, and everyone has had some amazing ideas, and we do have great places to partner with, like the Cultural Center. Someone had brought up about having parking up there. This is a cultural grant and we're developing districts. So having a map that we can then add these parking locations will be a great resource. Also too, as part of our website at the Chamber, because the Chamber, just so everyone is aware, because some people don't know what Chambers do, we're a resource for not only just the businesses to help grow those, but also a resource for our residents. We also sell, as many of the folks here, I recognize a lot of you, have come in to get beach stickers from the Chamber. We sell them seven days a week. So the beach parking has been incredible, the sticker sales, et cetera. So people are buying stickers. And I'm glad that we all had a time to speak tonight about this issue that we all are facing, but there were some great answers to it. Parking on a map will be part of what we're working on in the next few months.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay. So we agree that it's a conversation that needs to continue and obviously, we're not gonna solve it this evening, but I think we've had a lot, a lot of great conversation and we understand that there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle. So thank you for participating in that conversation. So Chris will, will bring this back at a later date. Fire Station Two contract award approval, request to sign the contract between the town Harwich and Mill City Construction Incorporated in the amount of $6,750,000. Do you want to give an overview?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This has been in the works for some time. There was some big concern, so we were kind of working with and working our way through those big concerns. We did receive a email at the end of last week, or beginning of this week, I think end of last week, that the Attorney General has said that we can go ahead with the, with the bid award for this. So this is related to the construction of Fire Station Two, the new facility. It was Article 24 of the 2019 Annual Town Meeting. And we did have, actually, the total appropriation was $6,750,000. The contract that's being sought, why am I blanking on the, the amount of the contract being sought?
Six million, seven fifty.
Okay, I'm sorry. It is six million, seven fifty. The total, the total appropriation was larger than that. So this evening would be a request to do a, the contract award to Mill City Construction in the amount of $6,750,000 to commence work on the new station, Station Two, at the intersection of 137.
I think that's, Chris, in the construction for Mill City is a lesser amount for total or is the whole amount?
That's what I was.
The whole contract or the whole, the town. The whole contract or the whole, the town meeting?
Is the six million seven fifty.
That includes items outside of the contract.
All parts, sorry.
Our value is five million six hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and twelve.
That was a number I wasn't coming up with.
Yeah. What, do you, are you going to, do you want, Norm?
Go ahead.
Just quickly, we're, we're behind now, almost two months. We're, we're in a bit of a bid dispute with the sheet metals workers for an item that is outside of Mill City's contract. We did our due diligence and took outside, took things out of the contract that we felt we could do legally, and council said we could do legally. And there's a dispute of one item that represents less than one percent of what we're doing is holding up this entire project. We need to move on. We'll deal with this bid dispute going forward, but it's not something that's going to affect the next couple of months of construction out there. But it will affect the overall price of the project because the contractor has timed out his construction with good weather. Now we're two months beyond. So we're very concerned about the additional cost, potential additional cost, and don't sign this contract right away.
Don?
Just as a point of clarification through you, Madam Chair, are you seeking just the award to Mill City for the five million nine hundred and ninety-six thousand tonight?
Yes, yes, sign the contract.
The rest of the money is just set aside.
If you sign this contract for the contractor so he can start, part of this dispute may well end back inside the contract. I don't think it's going to, but the sheet metal workers would certainly like to see it there.
But you don't need to see the other money allocated tonight, you just need to see this.
No, no, the town meeting approved the entire amount. We need to approve the contract amount with Mill City so we can begin.
Then I would propose, then I would make a motion that we approve the contract to Mill City in the amount of five million nine hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, you may, you may have already answered this, at least implied it, but are your debate points, what you call addendum items one through six? In other words, you list your alternatives, addendum items, are those?
No, that's not the dispute. The dispute is over the exhaust removal system in the present station that we want to reuse.
So, Norm, what are the alternative, the addendum items, one through the six? Is that part of the?
Yeah, the, the board voted.
That's included. We're not getting into the discussion.
The board voted all the, all the additional items. They did.
I just, I don't want to get into the discussion of future alternatives coming back to us.
There won't be. No, it's, the board already voted.
Right.
On specifics of what's going to be in the contract.
I understand that, but I still have my question, but we're okay.
Don't, don't confuse change orders with addendums, with, there will be no more of those. Hopefully, the, the change orders, one reason we took this item out of the contract was to avoid change orders. I don't see that we're, we can't modify this contract, certainly without the board's approval, and we don't anticipate to have to modify it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ed.
The dispute you're having, is it in the courts, in arbitration?
It's with the Attorney General right now, and they have taken their, they're taking a lot of time to answer a simple question. We're not the only community. Donna Burlington is, is going through the exact same issue. It's this, it's one vendor that's, it's creating havoc with these public projects.
Has, has the Attorney General ruled on anything similar in the past? Or is this all?
The only thing I can tell you, we're, all, all these communities, there are more than, I know of Burlington and Harwich. We're, we're waiting, we're waiting for a decision. Back when we built the first fire station on, on Sisson Road, the main station, we ran into this very same thing, and that decision was, we, in our favor.
Okay.
Very same thing.
Okay. Yeah. Ed?
So it's a sheet metal contractor, not the sheet metal union that is raising the issue?
It comes under that part of the contract. That's what their, their claim is. It's, all of that, all of that work should have come under sheet metal, and we're saying no, for very specific reasons. It's, it's, it's outside of what we can consider pertinent to the contract.
But it's a contractor that's raising the complaint?
Yeah, competing vendor, sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Any?
What we're trying to do is reuse as much of existing equipment, and it makes no sense to mix and match. Yeah, yeah. And the vendor doesn't see it that way. Yeah.
Any further discussion?
We have a motion.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Sorry. The Brooks Free Library Generator Contract Approval Request Award of Contract to Eastwood Companies in the amount of a hundred and three thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars. Oh, Don?
Yeah, can I just, Michael made some excellent points over the past year. I am thrilled to see Evan's check sheet and that there's a point person for procurement now. But I would really like to see in the packet itself a certification of funds and a review by legal counsel in the packet so that the public can see that this has been vetted in a kind of logical way and has been brought forward with all of those check offs.
Okay, well, to that, I, it's funny.
Yeah, we, we did obtain those. We did some of them today, though, so we're, so we, we have it. But I do have the material here, and in the future, we will get that material on those sign offs in the packet.
And, and just to your point about the, the check marks, right? We've, we've got check marks on some of the, the main parts, but not in some of those other smaller parts. I'm, I'm going back and revising it again, that we, that we get all the check marks that we need.
Don't get me wrong, this is real progress because we were getting contracts without any of these things, but it's, it's comforting to know that people in particular areas of expertise, like contracting or finance or whatever, will have seen this so that we can be confident when we award something that we've checked off all of the relevant things that we need to check off. I'm just bringing it up because the packet itself that the public is seeing only sees the procurement checklist. And hopefully, as we get more into this thing, it's just routine that you see that, yep, we've certified the money, yep, the legals looked at it, and yep, the procurement process was followed.
I've been commenting, we talked before about basically having a rolling form.
Yep.
That all the various people that are involved had a chance to look at it and approved it.
I do think we're making progress because, you know, we've, we're getting a more complete packet, but to your point, I mean, it's best to have everything that we should have, so. Does anyone have?
More revisions are coming on that checklist.
Thank you.
There's always room for improvement.
Right. Ed?
I'm picking, Madam Chair, move that we approve the contract with Eastwood Companies in the amount of one hundred and three thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars for the provision of generator at the Brooks Free Library.
An installation.
An installation.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Okay.
You opposed me?
Yeah.
Opposed.
Michael's opposed. Green fleet fuel efficient vehicle replacement policy, first reading.
So what I'd like to do is, I'm going to turn this over to Evan, but just as the board is aware, I just want to highlight two things. We certainly, in order to become a green community, which was an, a effort that the board wanted to see engaged in FY eighteen, had five different steps. We have, two of them have been accomplished at town meeting. One of them is this, to, to adopt the fuel efficient vehicle replacement policy, and the last two that we have to do, one is just a letter from the attorney indicating that our process for approving applications for development are within a year. We certainly meet that criteria very easily, so we just need to get a letter. And then we will be working the final piece if, once the board adopts this one, will be for, we have to decrease within five years twenty percent of our electric consumption. So Sean Libby is working on that plan, and once we have that plan finalized, that will be presented and then filed, and so we'll have the five pieces completed. But with that as kind of an overall context, I will let Evan do the piece on the fuel efficient vehicle.
Sure, so I, I just want to stress that this is a replacement policy, so the vehicles that we currently have, you know, they don't need to be thrown to the scrapyard immediately. This is only kind of in a going forward manner. And, you know, to, to Chris's point about we're looking for a twenty percent energy reduction, vehicles can add to that as well. So that's something, somewhere that we can look to get grant money and, and look to get closer to that twenty percent. Any, you know, questions from the board that I can answer, I'd be happy to?
Don?
No, it's a first reading, and it's, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Ed?
My only comment would, would be item three, I think, should be, should be restated because it's, I don't believe it's only police cruisers that we don't want to have turned into, um, of the car that our regulatory inspectors drive around in because they have a very low fuel efficiency. But, you know, as, we don't want the SUVs that are, because of their specialized nature, the fire service is tending to use in some of their cars and.
Their emergency response.
Yeah, I know, I know, but we don't, we don't want those falling down to be, being the car that the.
Oh, I see what you mean.
The health, the health inspector or the, the health director receives, you know, it's just not the police cruisers.
Yeah, I mean, the, the full, you know, I'm not sure how many pages, that, that definitely spells that out, but what I provided you guys as an internal memo was more of a, a short.
Just a summary of what we're going to.
Yeah.
I have a question, Evan. In terms of this vehicle and the, the whole idea of the plug-in, do, do we have a, a place for, just wondering how we're going about that?
We are looking at installing a plug-in in the parking lot. All we need is a, a light, you know, just a light fixture, so it's a typical, typical light fixture.
So it's not much of an added expense?
Well, that might not be the, the, the final decision, and, and we can look at that, you know, if and when the community decides that they like this venture, that's why we're kind of starting off with one, and guess for right now, we can just get by with it and out of it.
Okay, okay, great, thanks.
Just a little confused. We're reading, we're doing the first reading on the vehicle replacement policy, and then under the town administrator's report, we're buying one?
Yeah, actually, I was thinking about whether we bring it up here or not. We do have an opportunity, and I was going to bring this up under town administrator, that there is, for eleven, eleven thousand dollars, we can have a vehicle that would be on a three-year lease. The reason for the lease would be that we don't get a, the company that provides it gets a federal tax credit. Because we're nonprofit, we don't get the federal tax credit. So the company that leases it to us would get that credit, so the price goes from basically eighteen thousand down to about twelve thousand, eleven thousand. So we are looking at trying one of the vehicles out. We did identify some of the available funds to be able to purchase that vehicle with the effort to start this year, to start to change out the fleet. We would actually, we have five vehicles currently, this would add a sixth vehicle. There was a determination made that the building department has five people that currently share one vehicle. We do pay right now for those mileage reimbursements. Having that vehicle available will decrease that cost for us in the future. So the idea under the administrator's report, because it's less than fifty thousand, and I wanted to make sure I disclosed that, we are looking at, at purchasing a vehicle under a lease for three years to get started on the initiative with available funds.
Can I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
So in the budget cycle that we had this year, Chris, you were asked to come forward with a two percent. Instead, you came forward with a seven, six point seven percent increase. Now we're being asked to buy a vehicle for twelve thousand, and you found the money in community development, but you couldn't find the money at budget time. And now we're doing a reading on a policy, buying a vehicle under the town administrator's report, and we're not getting rid of anything. When we also had the discussion last year that most of those vehicles throughout the winter never move, so we're going to add another vehicle, another insurance policy, another excise tax, whatever else we have to pay, and a plug in the parking lot. And none of that information's here, but you want us to accept that under the town administrator's report? So if that's the case, please put me on the record where I will not accept that. That's it.
Well, we have two discussions going on. We have the, the policy, which I've been somewhat of a skeptic, because everyone knows of how much we save on, on not allowing cars to be moved down, you know, just in overall view of cost efficiency and miles driven. You know, it's more of a show, and most of them are being screwed anyway, so, but I'll go for it. You know, I, I like show too, I, I think, even though I don't find it terribly meaningful. I don't have enough, I don't see enough justification, Chris and Evan, to go for the plug-in. As justification in terms that we need another vehicle, it's almost as if it is, is, is part of the show, we'll show people we're doing something rather than have a real need. I'd need more justification before I could, I could go for it, especially with our overall budget.
So some of this is part of becoming a green community?
Right.
So we have to.
If we voted the policy to become a green community, one of the five elements is to complete the.
Well, let me, let me just, just state that I want to become a green community if it adds value to the community. And just to add a green vehicle, if we don't need it, if it increases overall cost, may help us meet a, a, I think, an artificial green commitment, but I don't see it adding to the efficiency or operation of the town. And, and maybe it does, but I need more, for me personally, I need more justification on that.
Sure. Would it be possible to just, to, to separate the, because they are two, I, I mean, you could not ever have this fuel efficient, you know, vehicle replacement policy, and you could still decide to, you know, lease a green vehicle. So, you know, if we could just separate the two. We do have a town vehicle study that was started under Bob Lawton that I've continued, and it, it culminated with the, the first, this vehicle here. So that's something, you know, that I, I see as a, a bit separate, but I'm happy to do whatever.
Just in response to Chris's comment, Chris, you know, the town did vote to become a green community, but why are you finding the money in a budget? If you were going to put that information before the town, why didn't you put it in the budget that they were going to vote on? Why are we doing things backwards? I just, this is, this is one of many, and I don't understand why you're finding money. In a budget, there was no money, and then telling the board that the town voted for a green community. Yes, we did, but we didn't vote to put this into the budget. So why don't we start doing things in the system that they should be done instead of putting them in the town administrator's report because you can sign contracts less than fifty thousand dollars?
Well, Madam Chair, I, I think to that point, two things. One, we did vote to, the board voted to enter in to become a green community. This is one of those legs to do that. So we are headed down that path. Evan, when he came on board, has some specialty in that. So I would strongly encourage for the board to adopt the policy. If you're not happy about the vehicle and doing a one-for-one replacement, then I will make the commitment tonight that we'll keep the vehicle at, that we will keep the fleet at five, we will get rid of one of the, the Crown Vics and just put in the electric vehicle. So now we are on the path to the point. I have asked Evan to put together a replacement program. We have four other vehicles that we will need to replace over the next five years in order to comply with the policy, so we will put that on the capital program. What Evan did, and I think this is actually creative, was he looked at the budget that we have currently in eighteen. There was some money that was available relative to the different departments, some was money left in there for the mileage reimbursement and things of that nature. So we thought we would start, kind of kickstart, the board's policy of doing this by acquiring one of the vehicles. So I don't really see this as being significantly outside of the, the scope. To the point, if we had thought of it before, we would have put it into the capital program, but we now have the opportunity to start a little bit early by kickstart. But we now have the opportunity to start a little bit early by kickstart, kickstarting it now, but we will have a formal capital budget for the balance of the vehicles. But I'm happy to make the commitment tonight that we'll just have the five vehicles and we won't add this to the fleet.
So, you know, in terms of the questions of the funding, though, also in our packet is that the various departments that are contributing their portions to this. And so in going forward, and again, I'm not, I'm not proposing one way or the other, I'm just reiterating that we did vote to become a green community, we do have to complete this step at some point in, in the following, isn't it the tw- next twelve months?
I don't think we have twelve months to complete it. As those vehicles become less roadworthy, we're supposed to change them out and replace them with a fuel-efficient vehicle.
Right, but I thought in part of the green communities, I do remember them saying there were certain timeframes that we would accomplish certain...
The only one was the five years for the twenty percent.
That's what I'm thinking of.
That was a different one.
That's what I'm...
Part of the same program.
Yeah, so the other part of that is that in, in the various departments contributing portions of their budget is to look to say, well, now we won't have, we'll have another vehicle that we won't be paying mileage to individuals for using their own cars.
That was the idea behind that.
Right.
And quite frankly, just coming on board and meeting with those departments there, they were in need of a, a new vehicle. They have rear-wheel-drive police cruisers, well-worn, and this was something that they were, you know, I don't wanna say excited about getting, but this is something that they were asking for.
Okay, thank you. Ed?
Yeah, if, if we would kept the, the, uh, the available fleet at the same number that we have now, would that eliminate some of the, uh, money that's currently being paid out in mileage that would be available to pay for this?
Yes.
Don?
So we only have, essentially, we only have the funds available to pay for this if we're eliminating employee uses of their own cars and the mileage we pay out.
I think the concept here was to have the additional car available to, in order to specifically reduce those numbers.
Yeah, I, I think that it would take, if I may, I think that it would take more vehicles to remove mileage reimbursement. Right now, you have one vehicle in the building department and you have five employees. Bob Lawton's study said that we needed a lot more vehicle hours. One of the ways that we're, we're looking at getting more vehicle hours is the more efficient utilization of these vehicles, especially as they're all-wheel-drive, and that's done through the, the online calendar. I believe that made it into the packet, anyway, we're, we're setting them up with an online calendar to more efficiently utilize this. But while having a new vehicle will definitely increase the use of that and maybe decrease some of the reimbursement, I think it would take more than a one-for-one vehicle to, to significantly decrease that mileage reimbursement.
Don?
Yeah, back to Madam Chair, I'm gonna try to urge us to follow the roadmap here that we got. The first thing that we're supposed to be doing is, you know, a first reading of the fuel efficiency policy. I agree with that, probably the, the way we summarize number three is not articulate. I mean, if there's a bigger explanation for that, then find a ways, because what we really mean is, we don't want V-eight beasts being, you know, flowing downhill, because they're way over what is needed for those...
Right, we don't need a V-eight Hemi for the building inspection.
Nobody's doing a high, high-speed pursuit of the building permit. So if that gets changed, maybe we can get through this and then follow this down to, when we get to the green vehicle, discuss that.
Well, the, the policy that...
The policy doesn't necessarily mean anything with regard to that vehicle, it's a one-off, so it's an opportunity you've had, you can explain it on its own merits, we can vote on it on its own merits.
Exactly.
But they're not on the same agenda item, and we've, we're stalling and going in a circle here. We're going back and forth between the policy and the vehicle, and the policy and the vehicle.
Right, all, all, the only point I'm making is that, that internal memo is, is purposefully concise compared to this.
Fine, but I agree with that, if you can change item three, and then try to move forward to the discussions in sequence, because they're gonna require two different actions. We can't do both of these things with one action.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, given the...
Well, this will go back to the policy.
Given that comment, then I'd like to move approval of the fuel efficiency vehicle replacement policy first reading.
And to bring it back for a second.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, second, with the change to item three.
Well, actually, is it?
Item three is not, that's just a summary, that's not part of the policy, so...
It's a summary, you know?
We won't have that included.
Public sort.
Yep.
Okay, so we've got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Five years.
Five years, right. Gift from Agway Cape Cod for booth space at Paw Palooza Cape Cod on July fourteenth and fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen at the Dennis Yarmouth High School.
Hi, Robin, good evening.
Hi, Julie, thank you. So I had started working with Paw Palooza last year in anticipation of attending this year. I explained to them that I could not attend this year, that I was not to spend any more money on the pet burial ground, and they then gifted me the booth. I've been working with the K-nine unit, 'cause they wanna do a memorial at the pet park, and also been working with all of the board members on the Paw Palooza. They usually have the Paw Palooza every July. This year, they're gonna have it, and they're taking off in nineteen. So the one after this will be not till two thousand and twenty. I was going to go and just give informational information, we will not be selling lots, we'll just be talking about the plans that we might have for the future development of the pet burial ground. Last year, they had over ten thousand pet owners attend, and it, it is, would be a great opportunity if I could attend. So I am asking for permission, I am only going on Saturday if the board will approve it.
Okay, thank you. Discussion? Don?
Well, I suspect I'm gonna get outvoted in any event, but assuming that point, this might present an opportunity to find out, too, of interest, because you're probably gonna be asked to put together a business plan for town meeting, and it'd be good to know who's interested.
That is true.
So, I mean, as long as we're not pitching, yeah, it's gonna cost this, because we don't know, it's, nothing's been approved.
Correct.
Okay. Michael?
So we can't sell lots?
Not yet.
We're not selling lots there now, no.
Why?
Because there's nothing legally there yet.
Yeah, the, the site isn't finished to a spot where we would be able to sell lots, we would need to have the, the walkway in place, and the project was stopped by a vote of the board prior to that occurring.
So it's only because of the locks? Because I thought the approval was, she could then do what she wanted with the money she raised there by selling lots.
Well, no.
There's no fund to put in.
There's no, when we create the fund, and we go back to town meeting.
Yeah, we have to create the fund at town meeting.
Right. Larry?
Yes.
Ed?
Well, you know, the, the pet cemetery is something, one, the town has voted to establish, and two, something we've won an award on, why wouldn't we want to be at a public event of pet owners to tell people what we've done? With that, I don't know if we authorize the cemetery director to, director of cemetery?
Administrator.
Administrator, to attend at the Paw Palooza Cape Cod on July fourteenth and fifteenth, or fourteenth at Dennis Yarmouth High School.
And to accept the gift from Agway Cape Cod.
Yeah, accept the gift, right.
I'm a gift, not to the cemetery administrator, it's to the town.
Right.
Larry seconded it.
I seconded.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Don's opposed.
For.
Okay, old business, town administrator's report.
Well, as we started the discussion, I was just gonna report that, as I indicated, that we did have some availability when we looked at the, the budget and with the vehicles that we have, and it was my intent to award the, the lease agreement for the Mitsubishi and to get us into the business of having fuel-efficient vehicles for those departments where the policy would apply. So that's what I was gonna report under town administrator's report.
Can I come on now?
Go ahead, Michael.
So on that, Chris, when you went back after I spoke, you said that you were doing a one-for-one replacement after you told us originally it was a six?
I will do the one-for-one, if that makes it more palatable.
I know that we don't get to vote on this, 'cause it's under the town administrator's report, and you get to do your fifty thousand, I just wanna voice my objection to the way you've done this. Not saying that we don't need it, but I am gonna reiterate that we spent over sixty-five million on our budget this year, you weren't able to find any money, and we spent another thirty million of taxpayers' monies on other projects, and to bring this forward now is, in my opinion, slapping the taxpayer's face.
Don?
Well, I'm not gonna be as strong as Michael on this, I will point out that these are coming from FY eighteen funds, so everything that comes from FY eighteen funds to devote to this is money that's not going to cascade forward to free cash the, the following year. So I'm not sure what the, if there's an expediency, if this is a deal that's premised on a federal law that end or a deal from a dealership that can or can't wait, that would be something that I think we should hear.
Um, the answer is... Um, so with the federal government, I think there's a lot in play at the moment. I'm, I'm not sure that any, um, green fuel-efficient, um, program is, is particularly safe. There used to be a state one that you could double-dip with both federal and state funds, and now that state one is, is over. Um, so I'm not, I'm not sure when this one will, how long this one will be around for.
Ed, any comment?
Oh, you know, I just, just, as somebody who owns a fu- fuel-efficient car, when I bought it, um, let's see, it's now five years ago, the three years that it took me to pay off, I paid for the monthly, uh, car payment out of fuel savings, because before that I was driving my F-150, and I knew exactly how much I was spending, and I was spending significantly less. So, you know, it's, it, going forward, uh, um, uh, there, there, there is savings to be had, and, and also there's, uh, savings to be had from what you're putting out of the fuel pipe.
My, uh, no, I, she, Michael, go ahead.
Just a reply to that, Ed, you don't even know what the cost is, and you're speaking about the savings. You don't know what the plug's gonna cost, you don't know what the insurance is gonna cost, you don't know what any of it's gonna cost, so that's a great statement, and thanks for that.
Yeah, as, I'm gonna restate what I said before, I'm uncomfortable with this, because we're looking at replacement vehicles, and I think we should have a plan, and we have had a plan for replacement vehicles. If this plug-in was in part, as part of that plan, I'd be much more favorably, uh, exfoli- inclined to vote to be in favor, I'd be before. My problem is, is that it almost seems like it had the possibility of getting a plug-in, so you, you did that, then decided, well, it must be neat for it in town. And if we look at our budgets and so on, I just wanna be sure that we're not using this, the green community to sidestep our overall planning process on all the items. That makes no sense to me, I wanna be sure we have a thought-out plan, we hear that, and if we have a chance to do it better, and this may be a chance to do it better, then we should do it, and not offset, go outside of that, of that plan.
Oh, I, I think it would be helpful to see what they're spending, I mean, you've got five people in the department, and you're reimbursing mileage all over the place, I'm sure, 'cause they have to get out there and do their inspections.
Yes.
So it'd be helpful to have that information of what, what that's costing the departments, right?
Yeah, see, that's what we don't have.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so we bring it back, and we talk about the fact that there's money being expended on mileage reimbursement, there's money's being expended on fuel, to Ed's point, and there's also the idea that although, you know, it's a newer vehicle, with the safety features and such, there may not be, it'd be good to have a comparison on the insurance rate, because you may find that the insurance rate is, is, to Michael's point, could be much more expensive, or it may not be, based on it being a newer vehicle with more safety features. So I think we need more information to be able to evaluate what exactly the costs are. I mean, if the departments are saying that they're willing to take a portion of their budget to, to get this, we, you know, we should be listening to that, too, I, I think, but I do agree, we need more information.
I'd like to add to the study, too, to see how often these five vehicles in the back parking lot move year-round, how mu- how much they're, how much they're driven based on mileage, because pretty much all winter long, those cars sit, and a lot of times, they sit with snow on them, so.
Well, I guess they, that's another point, though, right? So the other point is, how, how many, if those vehicles are sitting, because they're not good in the snow, so that's more mileage.
Most of them are rear-wheel-drive, junk in the snow.
Right, so they're having to use their own vehicles to move around town safely, so that's a safety issue.
Yes, I'm having some, some difficulty with the concept of department budgets, it's the overall town budget, and so I, I have a little, I can't quite relate to, well, the department's gonna give up part of their budget, 'cause I don't know where to take that.
Okay. Don?
Yeah, I just wanna throw in something into this mix, because we're doing, are we making this an academic endeavor, or is this still a real possibility? Is, is there a deadline to do this or not do this?
Sure, so, so this isn't something that's on the state bid list, so this isn't good for an entire fiscal year. Any quote that we get is good for a month, and then we'll, we'll need to go out for the bid again.
So we could get all this information within that constraint and put it on the next meeting, or not?
Uh, when's the next meeting?
Two weeks.
Twenty-third.
One-third.
That's possible.
I haven't signed the agreement, so...
Okay.
Smile when you say that.
So, okay, I think I have a sense for the flavor of the board. Item B is the piping plovers at Red River Beach. I dig it down today, the barriers had been moved, so there are no parking places taken, the only element that's cut off is the little cul-de-sac at the end, the turnaround at the end. The birds, I, I actually kinda, I guess, got excited, they did fly a little bit and thought we were done, so I did order the barriers to be moved, but then when I realized that the barriers weren't obstructing any parking anymore, and the mass Audubon people asked if we could leave them there for a few more days for the birds to fly more efficiently than we did, I, I said that would be fine. So hopefully, by the end of the week, the, the barriers will be gone, and the, and the birds will have taken flight in total. On the renewal of the vendor at the cultural center, there was some information that had been submitted, that there was relevant to, we do rent out space for different exercise activities, one of those spaces that the board did authorize me to engage, I try to keep the majority of the rentals for folks that do art, but in order to try to diversify the use, we do have somebody that does spinning as an exercise, which is basically biking, and then we do have someone that we did renew the, the agreement with, that they do pole dancing as an exercise. And a person from the general public had raised some concerns that someone was advertising an event that was not gonna be held at the, at the community center, but just something that was related to this service. We have spoken with the, the person that rented the facility from us, and just reminded that it is for private use for, for the exercise and not for any pay activity. So that was, I was just asked to, to follow up on, on that one. On the cultural council grants, as was alluded to earlier, the town has, actually, I did sign for this, 'cause it was under fifty thousand, a cultural council, a cultural council grant for ten thousand dollars, basically what that ten thousand dollars is in the materials, basically gets us maps, as was alluded to earlier, some improvements to the chamber website for designation of these areas, and then also some improvements to the kitchen at the community center, to move us closer to being able to rent that facility for kitchen purposes.
Okay.
Cultural Center, what do they say? I'm sorry, I'm just tired.
I think I'll step in on this one, just to help out a little. Um, so, when we did write the grant, um, that we were awarded for the ten thousand dollars, um, how it breaks down, you have to have, uh, signage. So, in each of the districts, which we are going for two, there will be four signs, as well as, um, we're part of, uh, the cultural center, and the attraction from the council was what we had over at the school, changing that over. So, um, we had asked, um, Carolyn for a wish list, and one of the strong things that we're looking to do is to rent out the old cafeteria kitchen area, as well as upgrade the auditorium. So, that also will be part of this ten thousand dollars. Um, Chris alluded to in upgrading, um, the chambers website. It's actually, part of the website will have, um, definite distinction of the cultural districts. So, it isn't really upgrading our website, it's just adding to, um, and having a place for, um, the cultural information, district, uh, information. So, it was the auditorium, the cafeteria, the website, district maps, and the signage. That will start with this, uh, ten thousand dollar grant that we were awarded.
Thank you.
And then, uh, just the, uh, final, I have two additional items, just, uh, I don't always announce this, but, uh, we, the staff does attend quite a bit of Maya, which is our insurance company. Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association do, does put in as a group, uh, they're made up of municipalities throughout the Commonwealth, uh, do put in for participation credits, so the more that our, uh, our folks get educated towards, uh, different elements to protect the town's interests from liability, uh, we get credits for that. So, uh, this past year, uh, that was just shy of nine thousand dollars, uh, that we got. That goes towards the FY nineteen particip- participation credits. Just, uh, that's one of the things that I did, uh, I was asked by the Maya folks to be on that Board of Directors, so I do vote, uh, in an active way for these things, to try to promote, uh, ways to, to make towns operate more, um, safely. And then, uh, just one thing that came up on, uh, Friday, uh, we are in the process of still kind of working on this, but, uh, just in case there's any comments that are raised, uh, there's a group called the Monomoy Collaborative Learning Program, uh, that there was a law change that required that any activities they engage in with, at the beach, they need to have lifeguards. And because there was a difference in which Monomoy is officially a different entity than Town Harwich, we could not, uh, have our lifeguards cover them. Uh, so, I have sent over, actually Evan worked to send over an agreement, uh, with Monomoy to say that we would have our lifeguards, uh, help those, uh, help that program, so that way they could qualify and that youngsters can, uh, participate on the beach, having the lifeguards from, uh, REC be able to cover that service. Uh, that was a, a new, um, a new law, apparently, that has come out. Uh, so, I just wanted to, to kind of disclose that, uh, we did participate in that, too, to make that, uh, work. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, or the superintendent Carpenter, was away, but I did have a telephone conversation, so those kids were turned away for a couple of times to go to the beach. Uh, but as of today, um, they are able to, to, to go to that activity.
Madam Chair.
Uh, go ahead, Don.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I, I really appreciated, uh, the effort that both the Town Administrator and the Assistant Town Administrator put into this, because the MCLP basically got trapped in this law up. Like, they used to be the Harwich, uh.
Public schools.
Yes.
Public school.
Public schools. Harwich became a regional school, but the law doesn't contemplate anything like that, and it became recognized as a camp, which, it's not the same as a Brewster archery camp or anything, it's a, but the law didn't recognize anything in between. It's a government instrumentality, there are kits. I mean, there were, and they came down on the school bus, and instead of talking about why they couldn't do this, uh, uh, the TA and the ATA actually worked on how they could. So, I, I mean, that much I really appreciate it, because the, the kids don't know about any of this stuff. All they know is that they weren't allowed at the beach.
And, and for the record, there was, uh, a lot of great input from the Health Department and Megan and, and down at REC with.
Everybody helped, that's what I'm saying, is that this was impressive, about people trying to find a solution instead of just saying it's a problem and we're not gonna do anything.
That concludes my comments, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, on Don's point, and great to have that help and have the kids be able to enjoy the, the beach, so. Sloughman's report, Don?
Yes, I see that we have the Town of Harwich, uh, notice of vacancies, and while people can read that in the packet, I want to particularly highlight the fact that we have got vacancies in our regulatory bodies. Uh, we got a zoning board of appeals vacancy, we've got a planning board vacancy, we got a board of health vacancy. These are really important vacancies, I mean, we need people to volunteer, uh, 'cause everybody who owns something in town is affected by the decisions that these people make. Uh, and we really want citizens sitting on there who are engaged. You don't have to be an expert in health, you don't have to be an expert in planning. What you have to have is a good heart and a good head and a willingness to learn the areas that you'll be serving on. If this was all about technical expertise, the state would just say, let the health director do everything and let the planner do everything. It's about the public being able to have a representative to be able to vote on people's interests. They're balancing the town's interests against, uh, property owners' interests. And because every one of those affects people that own something, in- including the historic district and historic commission, these things affect people's homeownership rights, uh, in particular, and they balance that against the, uh, interests of the town. We need people to volunteer, and I'm re- I'm really begging people to step up to the plate. If you've ever thought that you might want to do something, uh, to give back to the town, now's the time.
Thank you. Ed?
No.
Nope.
Uh, my only comment is, is that we, uh, I met with the Waste Fire Support Committee at our last meeting and discussed the, uh, uh, communication slash outreach coordinator, and, uh, have sent, uh, Chris and, uh, I think I copied you, Julie, on that, you know, uh, some, uh, dot points, things that might be covered, and asked, uh, Chris, and I think Chris is gonna pass it on to everybody who they suggested, but, I don't know if that's a fact, alleged. But I've asked if that be, uh, that that come back to us as a draft, uh, RFP, our next meeting? Because we're, I know the committee's anxious that we might, uh, uh, sit on this, that we keep the momentum going as much as we can. So, I'm, I'm hoping we'll come back and, uh, have a good discussion our next, in two weeks' time.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, other than enjoying the Fourth of July and, uh, watching Harwich, uh, really thrive, we're not gonna compliment today on our town, um, that's it for me, too, so, um, it was.
I move we adjourn it before nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Second.
Sorry.
Okay, we're adjourned.